Good.
I think the video is what you all.
Here you are. Are we good? All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. If I could have everybody's attention for you. Yep. Where's David? Good evening. Good evening. If I can have your attention. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Father Reginald Simmons from St. Aden's to lead us in our invocation.
The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people worthy of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tones. And do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise among the cities and nations of this land and of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all of which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Simmons, we appreciate you being here. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, December 3rd, 2018, to order. Suti, if you'd please call roll and make the general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the December 3rd, 2018, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, you must provide an affidavit stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, I want to welcome everybody here. Good evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Next item on our, if you would sound the agenda, Suti?
Our next item is the approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 18319.
Okay. We've got a couple of things I'd like to modify. If we could move the agenda items for the board nominations of the Planning, Commission, and Equestrian Committee to after the consent agenda. Also, we need to add the following item under new business: Approval of a, I may mispronounce this, Surturari?
Surturari.
Surturari Bond and Statement Regarding the Payment of the Cost for Sue Dynasty Surturiary Appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And also need to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Do I have a motion on the agenda with those changes?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the modifications that you suggested, plus the executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Suti, do we have any?
Yes, sir, we do have one general comment.
Okay.
And that is from Mr. Adam Horengon.
Hello, my name is Adam Horengon. I live at 13420 Providence Road in the city of Milton. On September 10th, I was struck by a police vehicle out here in front of the Shell. The police vehicle was at fault. I am dealing with Gallagher Basset, the insurance company that represents the city of Milton's Police Department, and I'm having some difficulty with them. And as the insurance representative of the city, I thought it was best that I notify all. Some of the difficulties I've had have been a long time between an email that I've sent to them and their response to me, and I feel that they're nickel-and-diming me on the value of my vehicle. Do any of you have any interest in looking at the pictures of the emails that I have?
Again, I'll just say, public comment, you can speak. Certainly welcome to share that with council after the meeting, or an email.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I would ask our staff to look into that. Steve, Ken, thank you. All right, any other public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, if you'll please read the items. Suti?
We have one item on the consent agenda this evening: Approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical services, Bell Memorial Park, lacrosse wall. This is Agenda Item Number 18320.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second. Councilmember Koontz, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Suti? Okay, we moved our next items forward. So, Suti, if you would, the board nominations, if you would please read the first item.
First item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the city of Milton's Planning Commission for District 1, Post 1. Agenda Item Number 18325. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I think Councilmember Jameson?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I would like to appoint Kurt Nolte to the City of Milton Planning Commission. Kurt and his wife have lived in Milton for 19 years, and has raised three wonderful children. He's been an active participant in the community, and will be a great asset to the board, so I recommend his approval.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Kurt Nolte to District 1, Post 1 of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And if Mr. Nolte will step forward, we'll swear you in. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Planning Commission member.
The Planning Commission member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if council could join us for a photo op real quick here?
Signature here.
Let's take a full step this way, or Matt, that will work too. Now about just a half of a step this way. Perfect. There. Perfect. All right, we're looking here, we're going one, two, three. Stay in place for me. One more. One, two, three. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, you.
All right, Suti, if you'll please read the next item.
Our next item this evening is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the city of Milton Equestrian Committee for District 2, Post 2. Agenda Item Number 18326. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, Councilmember Koontz?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So, tonight, I'm proud to nominate Susan Kimball to the Milton Equestrian Committee for District 2, Post 2, in the city of Milton. In 2016, I actually proposed the creation of the Milton Equestrian Committee to support and promote the equestrian aspect of our community. And this position requires not only those with horse acumen and horse sense, but also those with a good business mind. And we're dealing with economic issues inside this committee, and with the opening of the committee, I'm fortunate that Susan Kimball has offered to serve. So after graduating from Tufts University with a Bachelor of Arts in Social Psychology, Susan has many years in business, operating as an account manager for Bryant Warden, a business consultant with Insurance Office of America, an account manager with Ascension Benefits and Insurance, and currently as a Senior Business Information Analyst for Anthem. However, her equestrian experience is just as extensive. She was a captain of the Tufts Equestrian Team. She was a member of the Shangri-La Therapeutic Riding Academy. She served as president and board member of the East Tennessee Hunter Jumper Association, a 500-member association of horse enthusiasts, and she volunteered at Chastain Horse Park training lesson and therapy horses. She worked at Noah's Ark Farm as head trainer and barn manager, and she worked at In Your Dreams Farms as head trainer and Emory University coach. She worked at Three Bears Farm as a trainer. She worked at SJA Enterprises as a trainer as well, teaching and riding for individuals at all levels in and around the Atlanta area on a freelance basis. So Susan, her husband Drew, and her children are here tonight, and I would appreciate a motion to support her to the District 2, Post 2 position on the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion on your nomination.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Susan Kimball to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
I second that.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second by Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Suti, if you just, hold on, we've got one more. If Susan can wait just a minute, we've got one more committee member, and then we'll bring them both up at the same time, if that's all right. So if you'd call the next item.
The next item this evening is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the city of Milton Equestrian Committee for District 1, Post 1.
Okay. Councilmember James?
Mayor and Council, I would like to nominate Chrissy Reeves. She lives off of Freemenville Road, has been a 13-year resident of Milton, her husband and two kids. Her daughter is an avid horse rider, and she has, what I've heard, some of the best donkeys in Milton. So, I think she'd be a great asset to the committee.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Chrissy Reeves to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
I second that.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Bentley with a second by Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, if Susan and Chrissy would now step forward, and we can swear the memo. I was wondering why you were sitting there so still. Did I get the wrong message? All right, if you both would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Milton Equestrian Committee.
The Milton Equestrian Committee.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you very much.
Now we're going.
I, I was getting up at the same time.
So, Mayor, I'd like to do a shot with the two nominees, and then have them swap out and bring their family up if they're here. Is that okay?
Okay. Okay, super. Just a half a step. All right, we're looking here. One, two, three. It's gonna be one more. It's okay, and it's okay. If you are solo, it is absolutely fine. So we'll swap out. I do, if, if you could stay, and I'll have family stand over here, I'm sorry, apologize, this Equestrian Committee, if you could stand with your family, and I'm gonna have this, I'm gonna get a shot by yourself, and then I'll bring you guys in to get you a shot. Yes, I do. But y'all just said, no, you're perfect, stay right here. You're doing exactly what you're supposed to do. It's perfect. Okay, one step this way for me. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. One here. All right, one, two, three. Let's get one more. One, two, three. Hold on. Super, okay, now we'll swap out. I will stand where I need to. Happy to. I will get you.
I know, man.
I tell you what, I will get you to swap and go by your wife, and we'll get everybody to shove down a little bit. We'll keep the family together. There we go, perfect, perfect, perfect. All right. There is a method to the madness. Okay, we're all looking here. One, two, three. Let's get another. One, two, three. Smile. Hold on. Now say where you are. You're all, you're all set, you're perfect. Ready? Smile. There we go.
All right, thank you so much.
You're so welcome. And we'll get you to the comments, too.
I just want to thank Kurt and Chrissy and Suti for your time volunteering, and that's what I would say, that's what makes a home a great place, all the people that truly care and give over their time. Okay, Suti, if you'd please read the next item.
Our next item this evening is a proclamation recognizing the Cambridge High School Girls' Cross Country Team State Championship. This is being presented by Councilmember Matt Koontz.
All right. So I'm honored to recognize the Cambridge High School Girls' Cross Country Team tonight. Now, as a former athlete myself, many don't realize the courage that these young women made this past year. I can tell you that they have run countless miles in all types of weather. They have run on pavement, on cement, dirt, and grass. They have had early mornings and late nights. They've trained in the daytime, and they've trained in the dark. They had to deal with aching muscles, knees, and joints, and they've had to eat for energy, and also watch their hydration. And they've had to do all this while maintaining their school and volunteer activities. Yet despite all of these challenges, they reached the pinnacle of their experience in the state of Georgia, winning the Georgia High School State Cross Country Championship. Not only have they and their families sacrificed personally, but they excel to bringing victory to that effort. Now that effort, that display of teamwork, encouragement, determination, toughness, and togetherness is precisely what it takes to win both on and off the field. Now you ladies have done just that, and for that, we are proud to offer this proclamation. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to read this, and then we're all gonna come down here for a photo shoot with the council. Whereas on Friday, November 2nd, 2018, the Cambridge High School Girls' Cross Country Team won their second straight state championship in Class 6A, and whereas the Lady Bears placed six runners in the top 30 to capture the state championship, and whereas the team was led by Ashley Sikrist, who placed third overall, jumping 17 spots from her result in the 2017 finals. And whereas Grace Gerlock also posted a top-10 finish by placing sixth, Clarissa Beck placed 16th, Afton Hershey placed 20th, Delanie Goodell placed 24th, Isabel Philippeck placed 30th, and Catherine Suppley placed 52nd, which helped secure the team's second straight state championship. And whereas these girls are champions not only on the field, but also in the classroom, in the community, and in life, we are proud of the Cambridge High School Girls' Cross Country Team and their contributions to our community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city of Milton, the city council of the city of Milton, hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, December 3rd, as Cambridge High School Girls' Cross Country State Championship Day in the city of Milton, Georgia, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this third day of December 2018. So, let's all go down for a picture, and the girls, if you would come on up as well, we'll, we'll take a picture and hand out these proclamations.
I think so. I think it'll be a better, a better shot, if y'all don't mind. Yes, if you'll, yes, that's perfect.
No, no, you don't have to, you don't, we're, we're gonna put in between shoulders.
So council will go in between shoulders. Okay, shift down just a little bit. Councilmember, yep, perfect, perfect. If you three on this side will just take a half a step back for me. Okay? If you'll hold your proclamation at the bottom edges, make sure your seal's at the bottom upright, and hold it with your hands like this, that'll be perfect. Okay, we're looking right. Okay, everyone, one, two, three, look at me, not parents. No, that's okay. One, two, three, looking here again. Me and parents. Oh, no. You can go. Come on, come on, come on. I'll press it for you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Parents are allowed, I just need eyes for a moment. Okay. Okay, everyone, one, two, three. Okay. We'll go one at a time. It's a big day, so everybody be patient. Okay. Oh, who's, was this one? Oh, sorry. Swap. And we'll give you high rest too, but I know everybody needs immediate gratification. We got this. Can I make sure that one's okay? Anybody else? So simply. Okay, one, two, smile. I think you're done, and you want help? You're great. Superstars. You're welcome.
Again, wanna, wanna thank all you girls and tell you how proud, proud, proud we are of you. Uh, I have to tell a real quick story. When several years ago, my daughter, uh, ran cross country and I was really pleased. She seemed to really enjoy it. And, uh, one day I heard one of my friends asking her, well, how do you like, you know, running and cross country? And she goes, I like it a lot. And he said, well, you know, or do you like, you know, tell me what you like. She goes, well, I like everything except for the running part. He said, I like the spirit wear and I like going on the bus to the beach. Anyways, thank you, guys. All right, Sid, if you please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is recognition and presentation of the City of Milton 10-year anniversary pins. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I'm not sure, how did we do this in the past? Just, we step up or I can, uh, I can go ahead and, uh, read the names out and then we'll...
Mayor, if we could, if it's all right with you, I'll ask that you step down and hand the employee the pin. I'll call up the names and have them, uh, and have them come up. We'll, we'll bring up all the 10-year, um, and then obviously the, the five-year's a separate item, then we'll do all the five-year. And then I, I think we have a little treat. All right, when I call your name, uh, just, uh, if you would come up, uh, retrieve your pin from the mayor and then stay up here because we'll be doing a, uh, a photo. So our first recipient is Kevin Barry. Next up is Joe Champion. Robert Edgar. Alexander Fortner. Stephen Hewitt. Andrew Kennedy. Michelle McIntosh Ross. Eric Sprouse. And then there's a few that couldn't be with us tonight. Uh, Dana Brayden, James Campbell, Kathy Fees, and Timothy Murray.
We might count. I think, given our number, I think that would probably be better.
You are not forgotten.
Counselor, if you would, take your chair out, push it back and step right up to the counter. Half a step for, uh, employees this way. Perfect.
Communications.
We have to make it beautiful. Uh, and then council tighten up just a little bit. Good, that's, okay, all right. Right here. One, one, two, three, smile. Again, one, two, three. Let's get one more. Right, smile. Excellent. Great, super.
And actually before, Steve called it the next names, just, uh, you know, a minute, a few minutes ago, when I talked about, um, our volunteers and people that help out with our city and what makes, makes Milton such a great place. Um, obviously I have to mention that, um, you know, 10-year recipients, the five-year recipients, we, what makes Milton, you know, truly special is just the commitment and the loyalty and just the caliber of, of folks that have been here. So, that being said, I wanna, you know, thank every one of them.
Do we need to read this as a separate agenda item?
We can, yes.
Do we need to? If we, if we need to?
No, we don't need to.
We don't need to? No, no worries. All right, um, it will do the, we'll do it similar to how we just did the 10-year. Um, first up is Thomas Dutton. David Frisell. Scott Lappin. Councilmember Rick Morick.
I had no idea he was a short timer.
Courtney Spriggs. And Coleman Sproles. Additionally, we had a handful of five-year members that couldn't make it tonight. Robert Buscemi, Kurt McDowell, Scott Richardson, Chelsea Waters, Walters, and Charles Yarborough.
Employees, if you will take a full step this way. All right, we're looking here. One, one, two, three, smile. Stay where you are. One, two, three. Okay, thank you, good, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. We're gonna take just a minute. We've got a cake back here for celebration and so we'll take just a few minutes and everybody enjoy a piece of cake.
I don't think we have anything too bad.
We usually don't, the council are usually that way. They're planning commissioning this council. So, if they're a council, they usually, we've got nothing coming from the council.
You know, I can't rely on this.
I'm probably gonna be close, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, if I could, uh, get everybody to start, uh, heading back to their seats. All right, if I could, uh, get everybody to start heading back to their seats. Okay, if I could get everybody's attention. Can I get everybody's attention? David? Get everybody's attention, if we could, uh, head on back to our seats. All right, who else is on council?
What? What's true? What, my trouble? What I do?
Oh, did I pause? Okay, oh, I didn't think about that. Kinda like, after you said that. Well, why would I have a dog? Okay? Yeah, well, you wanna hear the doggy?
He had a sore neck from an accident is what he had.
Right, I was gonna say, I'll get you back forming this morning.
Carol, do you have children too?
You're not a sweet person. You're a sweet eater. A cake?
I do ice cream all day long.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They've had a chocolate ice cream cake.
Baskin-Robbins.
Cake all over.
They have come out with so many interesting flavors.
Got to. Where's Joe at? America? He was right here, I don't know.
All right. Well, everybody cleared out. Okay, if we can move on to our first presentation, Suti, if you'll please sound it, item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter forty-six of the Milton Code of Ordinances governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton, Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-one. Next is consideration to amend the Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance to provide for a time extension on the ability to use either ordinance, Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-two.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation?
Mayor, I can motion that we approve the first presentation as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz, second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti. Okay, we don't have any items on our public hearing or zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Suti, if you'll please sound the first item.
This item is City Council clarification that the motion regarding allegiance sanitation was to, one, terminate the waste handling contract, two, make termination effective December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, three, notify the waste hauler of this termination, four, authorize staff to work with citizens to ensure that any citizens adversely affected are provided reasonable options if available, and this motion is further authorization for the city clerk to, five, place an asterisk next to the November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen minute entry regarding allegiance sanitation with a note cross-referencing to this evening's council action and clarification, Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-three. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. As I do this on various jurisdictions, the truth of the matter is, is that sometimes when motions are made, which at the time they're made, everybody that's hearing them, it sounds perfectly consistent with what the discussion was, sometimes when they're distilled to black and white, they don't always speak exactly the way they need to speak, and the reality is with minutes, you can't just change the minutes because minutes are supposed to memorialize exactly what did occur as opposed to what we all thought occurred, and so this is my fault, but the way you address this is, is that the next meeting, you simply clarify, and that's what we're doing here, we want to clarify exactly what the intent of the council was, and because this involves a third party, we want to make double sure that our minutes speak exactly with what the intent of the council was. So I think the clerk has read off effectively exactly what this is doing, and the key component I wanted to mention to you is the asterisk, so rather than modify the minutes from the former meeting, we'll actually place an asterisk next to them to cross-reference against this clarification, such that if anybody ever looks back, they will then have a nice paper trail establishing exactly what occurred, so that's the purpose of this agenda item, and I fully support it.
Okay. Any questions for Ken?
Yeah, the only question I would have is, obviously, if we do this, and since I was the guilty party making the motion, it is...
You weren't, actually, it was me that was the guilty party.
Regardless, but the only question I have is, is, obviously, we do this, does there anything that precludes them from ever reapplying at some future date? Maybe there's a set timeframe of a year in which they cannot reapply or whatever, that was just one question I had.
Yeah, I'm not aware that there's any prohibition in the ordinance that permanently prohibits them from attempting again. I'm not aware that that's the case, but I do think we need to nail down that as far as the action taken by the council is concerned, it is in fact a termination of services until that time.
Right, and that was the reason for the misclarification, I think, so if it's okay with anybody else, I'll go ahead and make a motion, and I'll read it just to make sure we're very clear this time, so, City Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a City Council clarification that the motion regarding allegiance sanitation was to, one, terminate the waste handling contract, two, make termination effective December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, three, notify the waste hauler of this termination, four, authorize staff to work with citizens to ensure that any citizens adversely affected are provided reasonable options if available, and this motion is further authorization for the city clerk to, five, place an asterisk next to the November nineteen, two thousand and eighteen minute entry regarding allegiance sanitation with a note cross-referencing to this evening's council action and clarification, Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-three.
Okay, do I have a motion?
That was not a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Coontz, with a second by Councilmember Cookley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Suti. Thank you, Ken, for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Suti, if you'll please sound the next new business item.
This item is consideration of a resolution approving Crown Castle Fiber LLC's application for utilization of the public rights-of-way of the City of Milton for wireless telecommunications facilities as authorized by law, Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-four, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution not unlike a resolution we have adopted previously, the entity at that time was Crown Castle, another corporate name, every time they have a different corporate entity that wants to seek authorization to utilize city right-of-way, they have to reapply. State law allows entities like Crown Castle Fiber LLC that are otherwise denominated by the Georgia Public Service Commission as a telephone utility to operate in our right-of-way upon making application thereof, a resolution by the council approving it, now they still have to come back and apply with our regulations to include our telecommunications ordinance, et cetera, and presumably, if they do that, they'll be able to install infrastructure in our right-of-way, however, this is the first step. With respect to that, my office has reviewed the application, we find it is consistent with state law, and it's our recommendation that the council adopt the resolution. Before the council takes action, I do want to let the council know that, you know, this is the state of the law right now, so in other words, there's this application, they have to show various things under the statute, they have to be authorized or certified as a utility by the Public Service Commission, if they do that, we then adopt a resolution authorizing them to make application for future installations in the right-of-way, but then they'll come in and actually make that application, they'll show us where they want the pole to go, where they want the facility to go, and we have to work with them, and they have to comply with all of our other ordinances and regulations. I say that to say, during the next legislative session, I believe there may be legislation with respect to broadband, which greatly accelerates this process to the point that it won't, there won't be a process where they have to come in and apply, and then they have to come in and produce an additional plan, it's going to be a state law that is intended to greatly accelerate the ability of broadband providers to install infrastructure in both city and county right-of-ways. I have worked very closely, I will say with that legislation, I'm working with folks from both the GMA and ACCG as we attempt to draft a draft version of the bill. Don't know whether we'll pass this session, I can tell you, who knows, you know, precisely what the General Assembly will do, but my sense is, it had some traction last session, and then it failed, my sense is, it's probably going to get done this session, so I'm using this simply to give you that additional info. Councilmember Longoria, of course.
So, are you suggesting that the state is reducing the amount of local control that manages the right-of-way within a jurisdiction other than a county?
I think that is exactly what will happen if the bill that gets adopted, that I have been working on, gets adopted. Right, it won't be a matter of you apply here, then come in with a plan, in other words, it'll change from asking permission, is the way I think the current model is, asking permission and showing various things, to a much more accelerated process, and to be fair, full disclosure, the presumptive reason for this is, is there's about to be the rollout of 5G, and I believe there are folks at state level who believe that this is a vital component of economic development, that we have an accelerated basis to allowing the rollout of 5G in Georgia to keep us competitive with other states. I'm simply suggesting that that is...
Yeah, I know.
Well, yeah, but you don't have a poker face, you've got many things, but a poker face is not one of them.
My poker face was trying to communicate the fact that what makes 5G any different from 4G, any different from 3G, we've lived through all those transitions, if this was some kind of earth-shattering technology breakthrough that was a tipping point between the Stone Age and, you know, medieval times, then maybe I'd get it, but that's not what we're talking about.
And that's a fair question, and I'm not, certainly not, a 5G or 4G expert, but what I do understand is, is the 5G technology is more pole and antenna intensive than, say, the big master poles that the 4G rolls out, that is my only understanding, they just need more of them, is my understanding.
Okay.
I think it's something that we're going to have to keep a close eye on, I don't know, I'd like to talk to you outside the meeting to figure out what role you're playing, and determine how this affects us as a city, because relinquish, this was the crux of the argument last year.
Right.
Well, the follow-up question is, I get the fact that we have to grant access to the right-of-way for anybody, it's a telecom company, but the same way that the current poles can only house three carriers per pole, the right-of-way is a finite space, and so we can't have every single telecom company asking for right-of-way access, what gives Crown, it, let me reword that, is Crown going to get access because of the first person to ask us for it?
That's a great point, and something that has been heavily debated, the bill that we've been working on has a considerable emphasis on co-locations, both with respect to expediting the rollout and with respect to the fees, because obviously, the local government folks are wanting co-locations to be optimized to prevent right-of-way congestion. I don't have to tell you, and I'm sure Carter can speak to this better than I can, but our right-of-way is sort of full already, we've got a lot of utility providers in the right-of-way, and these are fairly, these make a big footprint, depending upon whether they're a new pole or they're just hanging on an existing light pole, so that's the upshot of it.
Okay, good question.
Okay, Matt?
And this is just hypothetically speaking, so, Ken, what is the, you know, obviously, we're anticipating some change in the state legislature next year, right, so what happens if we don't approve this tonight and just wait to see what they do? Why do we have to do this now if we're anticipating something later on?
Right, that's a great question, my recommendation is, the state of the law right now is this process, and they are within this process, so my recommendation is, is we take whatever action the council feels appropriate to take tonight with respect to the state of the law as exists right now.
We're just matching our codes with the state.
That's correct.
This action tonight.
My sense is, there's only a few providers doing this, there is Crown Castle, there's AT&amp;T, there's Verizon, there's, you know, there's only a handful that are really doing this, it may be that Crown Castle wants to get this permission, then come in with some additional pieces of infrastructure they want to install, to get some of the premium locations first, because once it's the barn door opens and everybody's rushing in, that's when it's going to get real interesting to see who has scooped up all the premier locations, and of course, then can drive the rents on those poles.
There goes another question, so if, again, if we do decide as a council that we want to wait and not pass this, just hypothetically speaking, not saying we will or no, but just curious, does that then, is your, you know, does that then force us to wait and see what happens at the state level?
It doesn't, it doesn't, actually, this, the law as it exists right now, if we do not go ahead and approve this, and I should have in front of you, and I don't, the exact number of days, I believe it's sixty days, it's being automatically approved, so we have to consider it and take action.
Okay.
But again, this is just our recognition that we agree you have the right upon application to come in later and apply to put some infrastructure on, this isn't giving them the permission to put in any particular location right now.
Okay, and that was what I wanted to make sure I understood, so, okay.
So this gets approved anyway in sixty days, whether we vote on it or not?
Right, that is correct. That is correct.
Anybody else? Laura?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number eighteen-three-two-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Bentley, a second, by Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti. Okay, if you would, please call the next item, Suti.
Next item is added under the approval of the agenda, and it is approval of a certiorari bond and statement regarding payment of costs for Sioux Dynasty certiorari appeal, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much, this is a byproduct of the council's decision, I'm sure you remember the zoning action when the attended sewer discussion we had with respect to the Sioux Dynasty property, their attorney has determined to bring a lawsuit against the City of Milton, and I can't tell you exactly every claim that will be in the litigation, but one of them will be a claim in certiorari, certiorari is a mechanism by which, it's a appellate path from what's called inferior adjudicatory body, which in this case would be Milton, that's not meant to be disrespectful, that's just what it's called, to the Superior Court by way of cert or certiorari, to do that, it's a fairly arcane procedure in Georgia law, but there are two things that they have to have, one of them is they have to post what's called a certiorari bond, which makes a whole lot of sense if it was some sort of a claim for damages, which this isn't, this was just a land use case, but nonetheless, they have to file one anyway, so you're doing two things with respect to this agenda item, you're approving the certiorari bond, which, as your attorney, I can tell you, it's fine to approve it, it does no harm to the City of Milton for us to approve it, and the second thing you're doing is you're affirming that all costs below have been paid, and once again, I can tell you as your attorney, they have been, so, both of these items are simply prerequisites for an appealing entity to appeal to the Superior Court by way of certiorari, I'm very used to this process, my recommendation is the City of Milton approve both the certificative payment of cost and the statement and the certiorari bond.
Okay, any questions for Ken on this? Then I'll open up for motion.
Ken, how do you anticipate our making the motion, just...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, how much you want us to make the motion on this, it's our agenda item, or...
Right.
See one on the...
I would like you to make a consolidated motion, and in other words, handle both items in one motion, and it would simply be a motion, I move to approve the certiorari bond and the statement of payment of costs as presented.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the certiorari bond and the state payment of costs as presented.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Coontz, and a second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti. All right, we can move on to reports, anybody on the council have anything they want to report on, Matt?
So Christmas in Crab Apple was intense, that's the way to say it, there were, I thought there might be fifteen people here, had to have been, you know, at least two hundred, it was great, I mean, the parents were having a great time, the kids were having a better time, so I just want to give Courtney a lot of props, Shannon for putting this stuff out there, everybody else, the police were here, we had some vendors too, it was really a big event right here, and so, a lot bigger than I anticipated, but it was great, everybody had a good time, so, just have to say that.
Okay, anybody else? And again, thanks to our staff for putting all our events on. All right, we'll move to staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, since the last update, our T-SLOSS program, we received now nineteen distributions, or thirty-two percent of the whole overall program, and we're just under ten million dollars received in the T-SLOSS program. Some of the projects, T-SLOSS projects that are underway now have three in design, so we've got Hopple-Hamby, Hopple-Thompson, and most recently, Hopple-Bethany is moving into design, and right-of-way preparing for construction is the Northeast Crab Apple project, and so that's a summary of what's going on with the T-SLOSS projects, funded under the last budget was the Heritage Walk Crosswalks, so that is, you should see that agenda item for approval coming at the last meeting in December. And then some updates on some GDOT projects. So at the October Operational Improvement So at the October Operational Improvement Committee at GDOT, the Birmingham Crossroads improvement was reviewed and approved to move forward as a project. That's just designating funding and preparing for the, the next steps to finalize the concept and then begin design on that one. And also, we have two of the quick response projects that are under construction now. The 372 at Batesville, which is a left turn lane, and 372 at Green, which we've worked with GDOT to revise the plans to now do a Florida-T intersection. And we've gotten a few questions on what that, what that actually looks like. So, let's see if I can pull this to full screen. Control. Phil? There we go. So the, the plan for Green Road is to have separate left and right turn lanes. And then on 372, at this entrance to the, I think that's a daycare there, will start a left turn lane for the turns onto Green. And beyond the intersection is a, basically a receiving lane for the left turns off of Green. And they're separated from the throes by a median. So this is just an illustration of what that, that improvement is going to look like. As soon as the rain, rain lets up and the weather cooperates, the contractor should be, be starting back on that one again. So those are the updates I have and if you have any other questions?
No, I just, I gotta give Sarah a little shout out. I had to, went to, I got to go speak to some third graders the other day, Career Day. And of course, the kids were all asking me questions and one of them was asking me about transportation projects and what were we doing to fix traffic and all this stuff. And then up, in third grade, and then all of a sudden, one little boy raised his, "Do you know my mom?" So Sarah's on. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I have a handful of things to update you guys on. Had a phone call today and we are once again sponsoring and helping to plan the Biz Now event that is booked for February 6th. This is an event that we partner with the North Fulton Chamber and the other five cities in North Fulton, and it brings together developers and commercial, commercial realtors. And last year, there were about 360 of them in attendance. And this year, it's going to be focusing on mixed-use development and coworking space. The next is something that's going to be coming up on the December 17th, December 17th agenda, the contract for the Deerfield Economic Development and Marketing Study with RKG. We had a handful of consultant companies respond and we selected RKG. They've done similar projects for Roswell, Shambly, and Lawrenceville. And then once we get started, it should take about six months for that to come back to us. Also, working with the Police Department and Community Development on a vape shop ordinance. That should be coming on the agenda in the near future and we're having a cross-departmental meeting on that tomorrow. And also, working with PD on notifying the affected establishments of the FDA's new anti-tobacco efforts to reduce underage vaping and smoking. The fourth is based on your direction from the last time we spoke about the occupational attacks, I've, we've met with both CCA and the North Fulton Chamber and they both stated that they can support what we've presented. In addition to what we've talked to you guys about in the past, we added a deduction for people who both own a business in Milton and live in Milton, so like a resident owner, additional deduction. And we're planning to meet with MBA soon. And then the fifth thing and last is that we are on our third of our three contracted years with the Buxton Retail Studies. In the past, first year we did Deerfield and this year we did Crab Apple. And in this coming year, we'll be doing Birmingham Crossroads and we should have those results in March. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Next, we added agenda item to go into executive session to discuss land acquisition. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, make a motion that we move into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Morag, a second from Councilmember Kuntz to move into executive session to, to discuss land acquisition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
It's unanimous.
...